Hey, everyone. If you'd join me in the flight. Reminder of the mics. Try to use them as best as you can so everyone can hear. We have an agenda in front of us. I have not heard of any changes or corrections, so it asks for a motion to approve as printed. Mr. Chairman?
Second, Gillespie.
Sean? Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
We've seen our reports. Assuming no questions on any of that, we have a consent agenda item list. Is there any questions on those? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman Gillespie.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Sean? Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Takes us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address any matter coming before the count? Please come up. Give your name and address, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Trent. I'm from the Compost Center in Sioux Falls. Our address at the Compost Center is 1704 South Cleveland Avenue, Suite 3, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I'm here to address, and you might not know me, so I am newly hired as the new Executive Director of the Compost Center, and will be taking that position on October 5th. I am plenty of the Compost Center right now, though, when I present the clinical staff, and so I currently oversee the clinical department. So I'm here to discuss budget with you today. I hope that you all received a letter from your office outlining the benefits that we feel that we provide to Lincoln County. And so I want you to consider those benefits as we're thinking about budgets cuts this afternoon, knowing that the county has budget cuts that need to be made. And so we're certainly aware of that and in support of those cuts. We're asking you to reconsider the amount of cuts that you are providing to the Compost Center. So certainly considering one of the pieces in the letter that was sent to you, there are about 5,000, statistically speaking, 5,000 females in Lincoln County that have been sexually assaulted. 10,000 females that have been a victim of domestic violence in their lifetime. If I also think about men, there's nearly 17,000 statistically speaking, that have experienced sexual assault in their lifetime, and 7,7500 that have experienced domestic violence in their lifetime. That's a lot of citizens of Lincoln County and a lot of people that need support. We also know that when something has been traumatized, their ability to participate functionally as a functional and good member of society is impacted. And so there's a cost relationship with people who are traumatized. They deserve to have that counseling. They deserve to have advocacy and support. And so we're asking you to think about that as you're making the decisions on budgets that later this meeting. And certainly appreciate your support of the Compost Center in the past. We know that it's always a benefit to our organization to have counties involved. So thank you so much for your support in the past. We hope that we can count on you to continue that support going forward in the future. And I look forward to getting to know all of you when I officially take the position as Executive Director in come October. So thank you so much for letting me speak today. And I hope that you will consider the letter that you received and if you have any questions, they have to ask them, be answering them.
Questions at first?
What, you want to give us a number where, I mean, you would like to have it restored completely, but what is the, what's your bottom?
Yeah, well, I mean, certainly when we looked at the cuts proposed at the 79% reduction in what we are currently receiving, so right now we're receiving 24,000. The proposed is 5,000, and so that's a 79% cut. You know, we would, of course, like to see it ringing at the 24. We're cautious enough to fact that that's probably not a possibility due to budget cuts. And so, you know, I think anything that you can look at, you know, to get it past 79% is important. We could get it even to 50% or more. I think that that would be very helpful. So certainly, I think, any budget cuts impact our ability to provide services anywhere that we provide services. And so we want to make sure that we continue to provide those services, especially you might have the thought that you might build a public safety center. And then our services for pre and the prison rape elimination act would increase. And so that's certainly something that we want to keep in mind too as that goes forward.
You think, you know, 12,000 is kind of your, you wouldn't want to see it go lower than that, then?
If at all possible, yeah. More than that would be great, but I think you were thinking about those cuts are good as well. Any other questions for myself?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to address the county considering any matter? The panel turn to the board. Anybody on the board that would like to share?
Uh, Commissioner Chairman? Uh, thank you. I've got a couple of things, about three, actually. First thing I'll ask you, are we going to be meeting the third week of September?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's a no.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then I've had some requests, and I think Jim can relate to this. We've, we've had some people contact me, and they said, we're wondering if they could ever get a night meeting once, once a month. I'm just throwing it out there. I realize staff, it's kind of an issue for that. But I've had some requests if we could have one night meeting per month and don't have to make, of course, any decisions right now, but it'd be easier for some people to come, so. And then I'm going to, the chairman isn't going to want to hear this, but I would sure like to, on the 22nd, talk about rescinding the land purchase vote. It's very confrontational, so, but that's just, I'm just throwing that out. I'll talk to Sean on that, but that's, that's all I have, so.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
David, I think concerning your night vote, I think we started that kind of a hundred years ago, and we've never been able to accomplish that. But I would concur that one night meeting a month should, we should try that because there's a lot of people who are unable to get from work and who probably would want to participate or have some comments, so I can't say that I would support something like that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what, Marlene, you could tell me that, but is the first week or the fourth week more busier? Maybe there's a better week if we were to choose to do that. You know, I don't know. I just throwing that out there because there's some weeks that are heavier than others, so. But, okay.
I think it'll have to be a week in which, you know, the employees that are, you know, now in a salary situation, like, we tried this, Commissioner Schmidt, back in the early 2000s and literally had no income at that time. Not to say that would be the case this time, but there are some logistics that would have to get worked out. And Commissioner Gillespie and Commissioner Schmidt, if you want to work and try to find out, get those logistics and see how that would work for employees as well as the public and the commission, that would be great. And come with a proposal, uh, how we might be able to get that done, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? Anything further? Otherwise, we'll go on to Terry. Morning, Terry.
Good morning. I have before you, again, this week, a resolution to delete roads from the primary highway system. And they're designated on the map here, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I'm going to read them out, so. Section number 1 will be West Alljankton Trail, Sioux Falls, starting at the quarter section of T-100N, R-50W, Section 9, at the Lincoln Minnehaha County Line, then heading south approximately .845 miles from the intersection of South Baldwin Drive at the midsection of T-100M, R-50W, Section 9. Number 2 will be South Louise Avenue, West 69th Street, Sioux Falls, starting approximately 1,965 feet north of the southeast corner of T-100, R-50W, Section 20, at the intersection of 95th Street, then heading north approximately 1.632 miles to the intersection of West 69th Street. Then heading east approximately .374 miles to the inter, to the midsection of T-100M, R-50W, Section 16. Number 3, South Cliff Avenue, Sioux Falls, starting at the northeast corner of T-100M, R-50W, Section 11, at the Lincoln Minnehaha County Line, then heading south approximately 1.348 miles to the intersection of the proposed Veterans Parkway. Number 5, or it could be number 4 here, East 57th Street, Sioux Falls, starting at the northeast corner of T-100M, R-49W, Section 8, at the intersection of South Florida Highway 11, then heading west approximately .502 miles. These routes are being deleted from the primary highway system due to jurisdictional transfer of these routes to the city of Sioux Falls.
Any questions on any of that? Otherwise, ask for a motion to approve. No to approve, yeah. Any questions? Sean? Commissioner Rance?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thanks, Terry. The next four items have a time to schedule, so we'll jump to number 6, jury. Good morning.
Good morning. One item for your consideration this morning, and that's to hire Joseph Matson as a full-time Deputy State's Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office at $2,840 by weekly effective the 14th of September.
A motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Gillespie.
When you're ready, Sean. Commissioner Rance?
Now.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Toby, Toby here? I don't know if we need him here to adopt the International Building Code. Does anybody need Toby down here for this?
No.
I, is there a motion to that effect?
Uh, this is a first, those are first readings.
First reading, sorry. Toby, Sean, do you have something that we need to read to go to record then?
I do not. I'm going to call Toby, though.
Okay. I'll take it. Oh, there's a... Yeah, we all got those. No, thanks. Uh, we have number 10, which is a application at the city of teams to, uh, not even an application, notification of a waste dump site, paperwork requirement. Is there anybody that needs the actual document read into the record? Otherwise, it's just going to be entered as a hard form? Just notification that they're going to operate a compost site. Any questions on it?
And, uh, this is for grass clippings and...
That type of stuff.
Uh, this one is...
Leaves. Leaves?
Leaves, yeah.
Yeah.
He's got something similar.
Yeah, I, this is the first time that they've sent us that. I know the paperwork, it's procedural, I'm going to start. But if there's no questions on it, I'll have to let Sean actually...
He wants to challenge it.
So, second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Oh, we got rid of one. Bill, you must have something for us.
Yes, we have, um, I need some directions on union negotiations with the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff is here for that. Probably won't take too long if we can go into...
Can we run through, let me get through these four, three hearings, readings. Toby, can we get this knocked out? That'd be your cue, sir.
Throw me out.
Uh, good morning. Good morning. Um, so I have three items for first reading before you this morning. I've gone through each one, whatever, independently. Um, so first one, um, so currently in Lincoln County, we've adopted the 2015 International Building Code, and this will be subsequent to the rest of them. Um, this, this code is, is updated by the International Code Council every three years, so the latest version of it is 2018. So they're coming out with the latest version in 2021. Um, and so with this updated version of it, um, so there's two parts to this. First is the International Code Council comes up with a uniform code, which is approximately 500 pages of length. And then we, as a local jurisdiction, we adopt local amendments to that. Uh, so staff works with the Home Builders Association, uh, to, to review local amendments. We try to base those local amendments regionally. Some of the other counties, Sioux Falls and ourselves, try to adopt the same, uh, local amendments, just so there's consistency with building code, um, across jurisdictional boundaries. Um, so International Building Code, of course, covers anything non-residential, so commercial, industrial properties, multifamily, which we don't allow multifamily in Lincoln County. Uh, so some changes from the 2018 that I'll, that I'll make a note here, a couple of things, um, is that, uh, we, so we have exemptions for building permit requirements. Uh, so for this particular code, uh, we, uh, current accessory builder, uh, standard is anything over 120 square feet does require a building permit, building inspection. Um, so we're going to model that with the accountants in Sioux Falls. We're going to up that to 200 square feet in size. Um, these prefab buildings are getting larger and easier to, to carry around, so it just makes us consistent with that. Uh, the other thing is the way we did adopt new fee structure, um, I believe it was around 2018, 19. Um, so this code proposes a change to that now would be to cap, um, the commercial side of it. Uh, so currently, we charge .4% for residential, .45% for commercial. Uh, we realized we've had some proved sizable commercial properties, so it proposes a cap, that is a 5 million cap, um, so that, that would stop at that level. And so that kind of gets us in line with the different things you're going there. So again, uh, the local amendment to the IBC would be that first one. Um, and then the second one would be the International Residential Code. Of course, that covers only single-family dwellings, um, agricultural structures. Uh, again, no changes to that other than what I just previously mentioned. Uh, and then the third last one would be the International Existing Building Code, and that covers any structures that are currently in existence. So we do, in the, um, while incorporating, we do have a lot of structures, residential type structures that are quite old. Um, and so this allows, International Existing Building Code allows us to, to maintain additions, expansions of those structures under an existing code as opposed to making those structures come into compliance with the new, with the new, uh, standards. Uh, with that, happy to answer your questions. I believe we scheduled the second reading for that for, uh, the last, yeah, last meeting this month. It kind of looked another, um, so staff's currently working with, as the chairman's aware, is that, um, ISO does a rating for fire rating, uh, for building inspection. And so Lincoln County has never participated in that. We've always received a 99 rating, uh, which does impact, um, our property owners when it comes to our insurance. Um, and so part of the update, uh, part of, um, us getting a better rating on that would be we're, we're up to date with the current code. So that's kind of really the impetus for, for adopting the 2018 at this time. Um, and so discussing it with the ISO rating individuals, that this would, this would help us quite a bit with that rating as well as staff's current participation in the process right now. Um, so that'd be happy to answer your questions you have.
Toby, are you proposing that we're going to adopt the IBC as amended by the home builders process? Or are we going to adopt the IBC without the amendments?
We're adopting all of it with the local amendments, yes.
Okay.
I've had, I've been working with the Home Builders Association staff to review it. Um, and so I believe we'll probably come on the 22nd. Todd had a last year, probably come down on the 22nd and testify to that.
Any questions? Okay, none. Toby, you want to head on to the next?
Um, I don't have any other readings. I got the schedule at 9 o'clock. If you want me to start on that, or if you want to wait.
Now we need to wait?
Yeah.
Am I looking for Jake? And that seems Jake's in the back. You ready? You want to talk about a logo? We got about 10 minutes.
Good morning. Um, I'm here to seek approval from the board for a new logo and seal for the county. Uh, we finalized the logo and the seal. It's almost identical to what you've seen before. Here's the logo, um, and its color scheme, uh, more colors and design may have for the logo. Here's the seal with the cover and design. Um, this is part of the website to try to get branding for the county. Uh, I keep the department heads up to, up to date on this, on the website, on the logo and everything. And it's gotten to the point where everyone wants to start using it now, so I'm seeking approval sooner rather than later so that the, the, all the departments in the county can start using it and creating a identity for Lincoln County, so we can put it on all our letterheads, no envelopes, things like that.
Any questions?
Jake, uh, what, and Jim's going to have to cover his ears here, but, uh, when is it going to cost to switch over this one?
Uh, we're going to, it's, it shouldn't cost anything additional because what's going to, really going to happen is, uh, like any pre-printed envelopes or any of that stuff, we're going to use that up. And then when they go to get used, I'll be okay. Yep, we will not get rid of anything that we have right now. So that's where some departments are, need to buy envelopes or letterheads, and then some don't, so we're going to kind of, it's going to be like a six-month process to integrate this into every department.
See, Commissioner, you're conservative with rates. I mean, we're using everything.
I figured you'd, uh, say something.
I just think this is a, this is a step in the right direction, and I think it's a high time that we adopt a logo for our county. Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve what Jake has put, put in front of us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Hearing no other discussion. Sean? Commissioner Rance?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Bill, do we still have enough time, do you think?
Do the MOU.
Do the MOU. We just get into, we can do it? We have a request for executive session pending contractual matters. Sean, if you agree that resolution, that ordinance or requirement statute, thank you.
Executive session for consulting with legal counsel or nearing communications from legal counsel about proposed pending litigation or contractual matters, STCL 12523.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman Gillespie.
Second.
Sean? Commissioner Rance?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, will be in the executive session for hopefully not that long.
Is there a motion? Come on, executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Gillespie.
When you're ready, Sean. Commissioner Rance?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Randeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Toby.
This is a second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County amending Article 12, Section 12.02C9, Commercial Wind Energy Conversion Systems decommission, restoration, abandonment of the 2009 revised zoning ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. Uh, go ahead then. Uh, so this is a particular amendment. Um, I'll start off by saying this one and the next one, um, both zoning laws, amendments. Uh, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing, uh, in May of this year. Um, and, uh, we also allowed Zoom at that meeting. No one testified really for or against any of these. So any information that we grew in today, so information will be new to, to staff as well. Um, and so really, this is the time and place for the public hearing and for the second reading. But, uh, you have the option to, uh, to, to adopt, reject, or amend this version. Um, if, if there's some new information that's going from the public, of course, then you want to amend it, then we would have to schedule an additional public hearing, uh, which staff is all supportive. Uh, this year has been a challenge like any other as far as conducting public meetings. Um, I thought Zoom was the right way to do it when we did it in May, but unfortunately, no one participated, so again, any information we knew. Uh, so this particular amendment happens to do with, deal with Section 1202C9, um, and this is, uh, the Additional Use Regulations, your Wind Energy Conversion Section. I can recall, uh, you did amend, uh, the two most important parts of the Wind Energy Ordinance, and that was your setbacks and noise restrictions for commercial. Uh, Rex, that ultimately was referred to a vote of the public, and that was upheld. Uh, and so there is some additional other changes in that section, um, with, that, that we're going to take a look at. Particularly, uh, staff thought the most important would be this decommissioning section. Um, and throughout, uh, the whole process that we've been looking at the Wind Energy Section, staff has been concerned with this section primarily because of the way that it's, uh, with it's, with it's in ordinance. And particularly, uh, the requirement that, that the county would approve if, if, or the county approved a Wind Energy Conversion System project, uh, there wouldn't be any discussion of decommissioning. That would take place after the project had been built. And then staff would work with the applicant, uh, to determine what the decommission plan would be. Uh, concern with that would be is, is that, again, the most important part is if our project is allowed, is what's the provision to remove it? And so it looks like, and we have, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, we work with the Planning Commission, and we have struck most of what is currently there now. Um, and this would be, uh, the new, uh, language as far as that. And so two parts to this. The first is, is that we would combine, uh, the, the abandonment with state law. So state law says any type of conditional use permit is issued, that permit is valid as long as there isn't a year that it would cease to exist, and then it would go away, and that's by state statute. Uh, the next part of that is, is that, and really, when staff researched this, we don't have to go too far. There's general states that have Wind Energy projects. In addition to those that are in South Dakota. One of the, one of the themes that we found, uh, from a lot of, in discussions with different individuals, was is that they felt that all their ordinance required that there would be bonds and letters of surety, and those different types of requirements. What they found out there was is that typically these companies transfer hands quite a bit in between approval, then between operation, and even between, in between operation. Uh, they also found out that a lot of them did go bankrupt. And once they went bankrupt, of course, that means there is no money, so there's no money to aid in the, uh, in the reclamation of the site. Uh, what they found out though was is that they were, what was the biggest concern that, that we, we listened to was essentially was what we already know. And that's who's ultimately responsible for removing that lease, the property owner, the landowner. And so they felt that a lot of their current ordinances weren't transparent, and the aspect that, that if you read their ordinances, and even if you read a current ordinance, you'd be led to believe, uh, that the landowner is not going to be responsible in the event that there's a bankruptcy or other type of, uh, issue associated with the operation of them. So within this new amendment, uh, it would be explicitly clear that there has to be a copy of the executed lease furnished to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission then should make sure that if there isn't any, uh, language in there about decommissioning, that it should be. And the second part of that is, is that we end with, what is reality is, is that if there is an issue, the property owner is ultimately responsible. The county is not going to take them down. Uh, the property owner will be taking them down. In the real world, yes, we would want the applicant to do it. Uh, our office deals with at least once a week, uh, we just had one from last week. Uh, when it was a reason denied where the applicant placed a bunch of fill, four feet of fill on the property. And so the property owners, uh, asking the county is, how do we, how do we address this? Uh, we address it with the property owners ultimately responsible. That's according to state law. That's according to state law. Uh, so if I, I can give you justification of essentially what, uh, the justification was for, uh, the amendment that was presented. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff.
Who wants to start off?
I can talk to Mr. Chairman. Um, warning Toby. Um, you know, there's, uh, a couple of things in, you know, not to make it difficult, but, um, this, um, I'll start with the five calendar days. You think that's a little on the short side or, you know, on page, uh, I don't have a number, but, uh, um, I don't know, five days, recommended improvements within five days, uh, calendar days seems a little on the short side, but that's just me, of course. And then, uh, fifteen thousand a turbine for thirty years after, if they are decommissioned and they're ever built, uh, maybe the cost would be even more than that to take them down. You know, we're looking at, uh, four hundred fifty thousand, I, you gotta bring in a nine hundred thousand pound crane and all kinds of things. So, I don't know, I'm just a little concerned about that. And, um, those are a couple of things anyway.
I, uh, can't sure to take your reference on the document that was submitted by WeCare. This, this is the draft that the planning commission recommended adoption of.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm gonna refine the public, uh, hearing on this, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the change, please come up and address the board with your name and address, please. Like the record show, no one got up. Is there anybody in post to the changes? Please come up and address the board, name and address, please.
David Brower, 474, 528, 9th Street, Bursford. Uh, good morning. Uh, first, I would just like to state that, uh, document that Mr. DeWespe was, uh, Commissioner DeWespe was referring to is not a WeCare document. That actually came from the ad hoc committee that was formed, uh, roughly about a year ago. Um, I would say that the document, I did bring that forward at the ad hoc committee, but certainly that was something that I was really trying to look at both sides of the issues on. I can tell you that WeCare members would have a issue with some of the information in that document. So that was not a WeCare document. I, I don't want anybody to be confused by that. Okay? Um, this morning, I do come to you, uh, as a president of WeCare, though, and previous, and I do apologize, we weren't at the planning and zoning meeting because it was a difficult time and it just sort of snuck up on us and we didn't see that, otherwise we certainly would have been given some public testimony at that point in time, so apologize for that. It's been stated this ordinance amendment strengthens and sometimes it's been stated that it clarifies the county's requirements for commercial wrecks. I would argue that it really doesn't do that at all, but it actually weakens it. If you look at what's removed and that one is added, there are crucial pieces that are missing from this, uh, proposed added portion. This includes land reclamation, grid removal, just to name a few of the very obvious pieces. It's your duty as Lincoln County, uh, to protect us. And this amendment clearly doesn't do that. It does not protect the county or the landowners that could be responsible for the decommissioning. If anything, this proposed amendment is less clear and weakens the current ordinance. On a personal note, um, I'd like to say that, you know, it was asked for public comments and for public information where we can improve ordinance that we had. And, uh, during the ad hoc committee meetings, there was information that was given during that ad hoc committee. You have it in front of you, there was an alternative, alternative that needs some tweaking yet, that was really receptive from all the members on the ad hoc committee. That information isn't seen in this amendment whatsoever. Even the thought processes and the ideas are not in this proposed amendment that was brought forward by the public. And that's just disappointing. But let's look at this amendment itself. Right away, we look at the first sentence, it says it does not generate energy for twelve months, but then gives excuses if there's a lack for demand of energy produced, repair, modernization. Um, it sounds like a long period of time to me, twelve months. With that being said, why is there any excuses? It could be two years, it could be three years. Um, if it hasn't been generating energy for twelve months and it's because they needed to have repairs done, certainly the owner of that project is gonna get those repairs done within twelve months because they're losing money. Um, if the energy isn't needed because they don't have a buyer, if they don't have a buyer, then why have it? We don't need to have additional, um, time more than the twelve months for that to occur. Our question of twelve months is a long period of time. Six months may be more reasonable. I think this also sort of brings forward the fact that it's important to have a prior purchase agreement prior to issuing a conditional use permit from the county. That would guarantee that there is a buyer for the energy and that a project isn't built and they do not have a buyer for it once it's been built. That currently is not in our ordinance. Uh, it's in the alternative ordinance that you have in front of you, but it was not in the proposed ordinance here either. This amendment requires removal of the structure itself, but it doesn't address so many other things as I had mentioned before, land reclamation, access roads, things such as that. This is also a very high part of decommission, of the decommissioning process and is totally overlooked in this amendment. It takes a significant amount of work and money to get the land back to what it was before the project was started, and that's what we should be expected by the county and by the landowners. It mentions removal of supporting equipment, but I, I ask, what is that? What is supporting equipment? Is it equipment for the turbine itself? Is it for the project? Does it include feeder lines, substations, switch yards? Does it include transmission lines? Does it include road repairs due to all the heavy equipment that's used? Just as Commissioner DeWespe mentioned, all that heavy equipment, road issues that we're concerned about with the project starting, we're gonna have those same issues when it's ended during the decommissioning process. This is way too vague if you wanna protect Lincoln County and the landowners from a huge bill at the end of the wind project. You're asking also in this amended, proposed amended, uh, ordinance, you're asking the developer or the wind project owner to give an estimate for decommissioning. That is probably one of the worst things you could ask for. I say that because the developer, um, has to give you an estimate on the cost of decommissioning and land, land reclamation. That's not what they do. They, they don't do that type of thing. They develop, they don't look at decommissioning. Secondly, I certainly have numerous reports, we certainly have numerous reports from independent engineers, and they all have a very similar theme when it comes to estimations that come from projects. And that theme is that there's a huge underestimation of the cost. Independent engineers have said time and again that scrap value, but in these estimates by the project engineer, are generally overvalued and they don't take into consideration the cost of cutting it, hauling it, and getting it to somewhere that will accept it for scrap. Quite often, they say it's wash. Um, recently, they decommissioned a few turbines up by Lake Benton. They buried them. They did not take them for scrap, just to give you a, a, a local idea. We all know the difficulty of disposing of the massive loads that's been in the news lately, I don't think we need to talk about that. Therefore, in considering some type of bond to protect Lincoln County and the landowners, scrap value should never be included in cost estimates and it needs to be done by independent engineers who are hired by the county and then that cost is billed to the project. Most of us here have an idea that the cost of decommissioning a commercial wrecks project is, is massive. You have some information in front of you, there are some local projects in Minnesota that Excel Energy, um, gave some decommissioning costs on that have just started, uh, turning. That background files, I believe it was over four hundred fifty thousand dollars per turbine. In Midland County, it was over five hundred thousand dollars per turbine for removal. That's today. It's not twenty years from now. So this is a huge cost, you shouldn't expect, you need to have some protection for the landowners because they're not gonna be able to afford that. The production tax credit, which is really a lot, most, a lot of these are being built, um, that's tricky. It's not gonna be here forever. We already have problems with bankruptcies. When that happens and the production tax credit goes down or is gone, there's gonna be more. We have to ensure that there's some form of, some form of assurance in the form of some type of security or bond that's not part of the project portfolio. It needs to be separate. It needs to be in the hands of the county to protect ourselves from this high cost of decommissioning an abandoned project. This is for whoever is running the project at lendless use and therefore is actually in the best interest to you. Although, I'm sure that the project would disagree because it'll take away current profit to pay for future expenses. We understand that currently, as I said, it'll cost anywhere from three hundred to over five hundred thousand dollars a turbine to decommission a project today. But that cost will be in the future, who knows, but I would put money on it's not gonna be any cheaper. When we had a vote a few years ago for setbacks of the wrecks from the residents, it was clear and overwhelming in the results that the people of Lincoln County wanted protection, not some vague ordinance that isn't clear, that isn't, that doesn't say what is expected and puts an industrial project's desires over the people of Lincoln County. The high cost of decommission is just starting to come to the forefront across the United States. Let's get out in front of it and not try to do things from behind. This section of the wrecks ordinance had a lot of people with concerns and criticisms a few years ago. As a commission, some of you also said that there needed to be some updating on this, this part of the ordinance. This proposed amendment doesn't improve reception at all or address those concerns. It only increases the concerns of the people of Lincoln County and it fails to protect all of us from this huge potential cost burden. We can do better than this amendment. We strongly encourage you to deny this amendment. Look at, at an alternative, you have one in front of you. That needs to have some tweaks done to it, but you have a base there to work with. It's more defined, it's what the people are asking for and it's in the best interests of Lincoln County. Thank you for your time, I, I appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them now or any other time.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Thanks, David.
Thanks.
Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to the board. Is anybody on the board that'd like to address this at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I've made my comments. Uh, thank you, David, for clarifying that, um, the ad hoc, uh, thing. So, thank you for doing that, so.
Mr. Chairman, have we had a chance to really review what, uh, what, uh, Mr. Brower has put forward? Have we really, uh, made that comparison and to see how that shapes up with, uh, with what, uh, proposals we have Toby has made to us?
Only by the fact, I suppose, what the planning and zoning has gone through at this point in time and presented what they have.
You know, I'm not a, I think this is a far-reaching situation and since, uh, we don't have any, uh, wrecks towers in our county, but I do think it's, it merits, uh, a review on our part to look at what is proposed and put side by side on what, uh, what David has presented to us. And, uh, therefore, I'd like to, I'd like to table this for at least, uh, in a time or two and to be able to do that.
Second. If that's a motion.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on that? We can definitely table it. Uh, again, I'm gonna reiterate, uh, the, the, the opposition to win, uh, turbines in the county is strong enough, but I think it's a simplistic answer is just simply allow it. And, uh, the way that the people would have the opportunity to decide that, I think that's the simple thing that puts to rest all of these issues of what we do or don't have. Um, and I, that would be my support is if the residents of Lincoln County don't wanna have them, let's put it on that we just don't have them. It makes all of this mute and I think it's the most, much more clear answer to all of these questions, but. With that, we have a motion to table. Sean?
Krishnan Yans?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWespe?
Yes.
Commissioner Randi?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, now it's tabled. Next, Toby.
Um, so this particular amendment, uh, deals with Section 1206, this is accessory buildings and uses. Um, and as I've told with the first reading, um, the current process in Lincoln County right now is, uh, any accessory building over fifteen hundred square feet, um, in a residential district or in a subdivision of former lots, uh, requires a conditional use permit. Um, and so over the years, the planning commission has grappled with, um, if they should increase the threshold so we can decrease this, uh, what I'll tell you is that, uh, in the last two months, we've had five of these that have approached, so we've had, uh, denial on the wall and, and we've got some upcoming ones. So, uh, I'll make this easy and just say, I think you should table this indefinitely until, uh, we can work on this a little bit more detail. Um, I'm concerned that, uh, the threshold of fifteen hundred has been in place for, since 2009. Um, it's allowed the, uh, there's been a lot of homeowners associations that have, that have, uh, adopted the fifteen hundred square feet, uh, so there's some challenges to make sure that we're all compliant with that. Um, so again, uh, this particular amendment, we changed it to based on lot sizes, uh, so the threshold would first be anything, any person of two acres or less, um, there would be allowed up to two thousand square feet, so we've bent that to, to five hundred square feet. Um, and then, uh, jumping in with additional persons, so five acres would be allowed three thousand square feet and five acres should be allowed four thousand square feet. Um, and then the other part that, that I think is of concern too is that the current ordinance, we don't have anything that addresses agricultural structures. So prior to 2009, we allowed, uh, structures to be built on forty acres of land, uh, prior to the house being built, uh, that no longer exists in 2009. We do get a lot of requests for that, we're not able to allow that request, uh, because, uh, the ordinance requires that no accessory building should be built, uh, unless there's a primary structure on the property. And then, um, so that was kind of substantial change there. Last thing, we'll do some questions from the board, and that's really, uh, mobile structures. So we do get a lot of requests, uh, from individuals to place, uh, that I'll call mobile structures and those that, um, have wheels on them, so essentially like shipping containers, those different types of things. Uh, this would explicitly prohibit those mobile and mobile structures on the property.
And that would be anywhere.
Correct.
No, anything.
Correct, yeah. So again, uh, um, since April of this year, our office has been swamped with, with record building permits, with record application permits, and individuals are building a lot of accessory structures right now. At the time, in April, staff thought that this was a good way to move forward to, to increase the threshold, to move forward with it. Uh, but as we're dealing with it, these are, um, especially within subdivisions are major impacts on, on enjoying property owners. Um, so I, I guess the staff had to recommend at this time that you just temporarily table this one, or table, uh, indefinitely.
You've heard the request from our planning and zoning directors. Do you wish to discuss or simply table at this time? We have to do a public, but just so the public knows what you're removing before we talk about, I feel.
Yeah, that, that's your recommendation.
All right, so I'm gonna open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anybody in opposition to this ordinance? With that, I would ask for a motion to table.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion, second to table. Sean?
Krishnan Yans?
Yes.
Krishnan DeWespe?
Yes.
Krishnan Randi?
Yes.
Krishnan Schmidt?
Yes.
Krishnan Poppins?
Yes.
Next is a public
Next is a public hearing for the appeal of conditional use permit, U.S.E. 0056-2020 for David Cooper, Cooper Seed Sales for an agriculturally related operation involving the handling, storage, transporting, and shipping of farm products. Requested seed sales. Planning Commission denied 241. The location is approximately one-third mile east of the intersection of 469th Avenue and South Dakota Highway 44 near Lenox. Okay, good morning again. This application is approximately two miles west of the city of Worthing. Would be approximately right here, right up there. And I'll go back to this in a second. So the applicant for this particular item is Dave Cooper on behalf of Cooper Seed and Supply, property owner is down in Sir Abus. The proposed use would be a seed sales operation. And this, a part of that would be a 19,200 square foot building, approximately 80 foot by 200 foot and 80 foot by 40 foot, and approximately 1,080 square foot office of 36 by 30. It'd be utilized as Cooper Seed and Supply. Zoning District is A1 Agricultural. Capita Supply identifies this as future agricultural area. This is a conditional use within the A1 Agricultural District. And again, it will allow construction of a building to operate seed sales. This is, I'll go back to the other map. Typically, we show just the regulatory flood plan on here, on the, on the, on this map with zoning. As you can see, there is a regulatory flood plan on the subject property. And like zoning on all adjacent properties, so all, all properties adjoining are zone A1 Agricultural. This was the concept plan that was submitted with the application. Again, this would be a seed sales building. So primarily, it'd be a temporary type use. They're busy in the spring and a little bit in the fall. This was the concept planner, site rail plan that was submitted with the application. Again, the building would be placed on approximately 10 acres that would be bought from down in Sir Abus. And that's where the property, or that's where the building would be placed on the property. Again, the planning commission did deny the application. It was appealed by the applicant. And so you have before you an appeal from the applicant. You have three options this morning. The first is to, is to uphold the decision of the planning commission, overrule the decision of the planning commission, or the third option would be to amend it. Staff would recommend if you, if you decide to approve this application, would recommend that you amend it so that you can include these conditions on the application. Because with the planning commission denied, there was no conditions placed on it. So it's, so truly you can't overrule. You'd have to amend it if you want to approve it. I go back to, oh, there it was. And so when the applicant did come in to appeal, there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting of the applicant moving the structure. I did sit down with the applicant and with John Peters, our flood plan administrator. There was some discussion if we could move it further to the west away from the residential structures here. That, according to our flood risk in that, there would be some challenges to moving it. Really, where the applicant's placing it is the high end, is the high level or high ground of that property. With that, we have to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Toby, what was the main reason why the planning board rejected this application?
Well, it was motion to approve it and it was denied by the vote. I, I can't, I don't recall specifically if any of the members specifically said why. I would say the major concern is that there is some residential properties. And I know some of those, all property owners are in attendance this morning. There's some residential property directly to the south. As well as I think there was some, maybe some desire to see if they could move it on the property. But we've since worked with our flood plan administrator and that's really that part where it's at. That part where it's at now is really the high point of it. And so that's the best I can tell you of kind of the reason why.
Did they look up Highway 111 as well? I mean, I, I know you looked on Highway 44, but if you looked up as 160 acres, I just wondered if they went further up on Highway 111.
I don't know specifically where that was discussed, so. But I think, you know, I've talked to the applicant. There are other options, I mean, that we could look at, so.
What was staff's recommendation?
Our staff recommendation was approval. And again, primarily because this is a use, it's a conditional use in the agricultural district. There is residential uses to the south, but those are agricultural properties. So the same use could be afforded to any agricultural property of a district.
Very good. Any questions by the board at this time? Otherwise, ask for the applicant to come up?
Commissioner Schmidt, I was at the planning and zoning meeting that night, the hearing. I sat on the board. There was significant testimony given about drainage concerns and things like that. Whether those have materialized is something that could be a legitimate concern, I don't know. But I do see a number of the neighbors are here and I'll let them testify and you can take it from them. But the big watchword at the hearing was drainage concerns.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Toby, could you do an overlay? I believe the property was right across from that person's driveway. Could you do an overlay to show where, where it actually would be on, on 144?
Right about here.
Okay. It'd be to the, the west of that driveway of that property to the south there, right?
Well, it'd be, it's to the west of this field access, right about here.
Okay, west, right in, in that area then?
Right about here.
Okay.
I'll follow up on Commissioner Aaron's. It's kind of correct. There was some, so two parts to that. There was some concerns with access. This is a state highway. We don't have any jurisdiction over the access of it. I have talked to the DOT about, they will require some application be submitted. I don't know if the applicant's done that as of yet. There was some concern with at the corner here, there were some drainage issues right there. And there was some questions about if the county had or had not replaced a car boot or those different types of things. We've determined that any drainage offered this site will not impact this in any way. It'll be right there, so.
And the option that Commissioner Schmidt talked about on 111, that, that's, I see there's problems over there too as far as, we'd have to go, you'd have to go north, wouldn't you, always?
All of that gray area will be featured from a flood trajectory in that property.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant. The applicant, I see, is in the audience. If he'd like to come up at this time and address the board?
Good morning. David Cooper, 28, 137, 464th at Lenox, South Dakota. I'm the applicant for this property to be purchased under company of Cooper Seed and Supply. We are applying with, to this with Pioneer Seed Company, which is a well-organized establishment that requires great goals and, and property, you know, that we have to take care to make it in, an elite business. So we talked with Don Abus. Don cannot be here due, he was worried about the Corona, so he, him and his wife stayed home. But we would like to purchase anywhere between five and 10 acres. If we have not done that, we are, I'm just waiting on the approval of what happens here today.
So Dave, there's some issues that were addressed at the planning and zoning, I understand. Is there any comment on any of those at this time? Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to the audience.
We, just, just like Toby had said earlier, we, you know, kind of went through this quarter of land. And the reason that we had picked this is that, first of all, it's on a state highway, which gives us access to a few of our trucks and that, that they are, as were required to be able to come down those. We looked at highway to the north and to the west there. That is still inadequate for our building site due to there's problems with excess water that can build there. So we wouldn't be able to, you know, take that chance with the type of dollars that the seed inventory would be to take on such a water, you know, happening that has happened the last few years.
Any questions by the board first? Nothing? I, I think we're going to ask you to sit down for a second.
Okay.
First, I'm going to ask, is there anybody else in the audience that is in favor of this conditional use permit appeal? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience against it? If you are, please come up, give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Janelle Homer. Address is 46933, South Dakota Highway 44, Lenox. So my home is right there on the map. I live here with my husband Corey and my two children. And thank you for letting me come and speak today. We have several concerns about this proposed building permit. And the first and foremost one is safety, specifically traffic safety. As you guys can imagine, the traffic on Highway, on State Highway 44 is very busy. Even busier in the fall or spring with CHS Eastern Farmers just a quarter mile down the road. I believe the excess traffic caused by this building, trailers, semis, probably a lot of business on a 65 mile an hour stretch of highway is very dangerous. An example that I have would be the tragic accident that just happened in front of DND Smolinger Park, about 65 mile an hour road there with a gentleman having to stop to turn into that driveway. And unfortunately, he was rear-ended and killed. Accidents do happen. That's why they're called accidents. But I do not care if an accident in that manner should be happening in front of my property. Another example that I have is, is a reference that I would have from Lenox Bus Director, Russ Nelson. You guys know him from the Department of Sheriff? When our children want to ride the bus to school in the morning, the only option is to be on the bus at 6:45 in the morning when the bus is heading to the east. And that is because the door of the bus will be on that side of our home. When the bus goes back to Lenox to the left at 8 o'clock, he will not stop at our home. He will not allow for our children to cross the highway. I said, what if I'm there to help the kids get across the highway? And he said, absolutely not. We could have a small army there. People do not respect the roadway and the bus. It is not safe for my children to cross the road on a state highway. These laws do not apply to other highways in the county, but they apply to the state Highway 44 because it's not safe for my children. And if they have to ride the bus an hour earlier, of course I would do that. But I thought that was a very interesting vision that he has, why that's not safe for my children. Another concern that I have is that you guys are, this is being classified as a conditional use permit because it's agriculture. I do see where that falls in you guys' vision of agriculture, but in my vision, this is a commercial business. It has a storefront. He's selling product for a profit. That to me is a commercial business. Agriculture business, you're making money from the land when you're growing a crop. This is not an agricultural use in my mind. What happens in 10 years down the road, not that I want this to happen, what if the seed business does not work? What are you going to do with this large building? Probably isn't going to be agricultural use anymore if it's sold off as something else. Or what if the Abus' decide to sell another five or 10 acres, this time to a mechanic shop, a welding shop? That's commercial business. Well, we've already got one business and as would another. Now I have commercial development directly across from my home. About a week and a half ago, silage cutters came out and cut out the section that is proposed for this building. And to be honest, until that happened, I was not so much, little concerned, not crazy concerned. But since that corner's been cut out, I have to tell you that I've been honestly sick about it. As I sit in my kitchen at the table and look out the window, I see your business. When I'm outside playing with my children in the yard at sunset, I see your business. When I go down my driveway, look down my driveway, all I see staring me in the face is your business. We purchased this property in 2013 as our general home with the excitement to raise our children in the country, teach them the value of livestock, hard work, and most importantly, freedom in open spaces. This is going to be taken away from us by this development. Dave, we are not against you. We're not against your family. We've known you for our whole life. I, I wish you could make this business and live it up. I just do not care for it to be directly across from my home. There's a lot of acres here. I understand there's some other issues. That part's not my issue. My issue of this is being directly across from my home. This building has not been built yet. I don't know why it cannot be placed somewhere else. I cannot pick up my home, my tree robes, my outbuildings, and place them somewhere else. I thank you guys for taking time to listen to me, make my points. I hope you see the work that the planning and commission has already done and uphold the vote to deny this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, with that, I'm going to recognize that no one else approached. Anybody else from the board like to ask any questions of staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions for Dave, if you wouldn't mind coming up, Dave.
Thank you.
Is, I got to ask you this, and I don't want to hit you below the belt, but is there another location, possibly?
Not at this moment.
Nothing on 44 in either direction, man?
No, sir. Not that I, not that I've spoke with on, on any, other landowners or that part under Dave.
There's not a second backup?
No.
And they, and the property to the intersection there to the west, going south there, that isn't at the intersection, that wouldn't be a possibility either. You haven't talked to those two landowners?
To the west and the south?
Yeah.
Which would be?
Yeah, and I don't know who owns that, but.
The Snydermans, I think, is who it is.
I have not talked to them, no.
I have not.
It was just a thought. You know, I see there's a little, I see across the road, there's some problems with water, maybe to the, to the west there and south at the intersection. It's, it's better, you know, so.
We, if I recall, I had a couple of things that they, they're asking of us as being neighbors. We did the same thing that I did, talked to the school bus, Russ and that stuff. And I asked him about the safety of kids. And I had the same concern that she does. However, they, I, speaking with Russ, I asked him, she said exactly what they do. They, when they never make the kids cross the road. And coming back, however, I did ask him, I said, if there is a problem with picking up kids at, you know, on the bus, I said, in years past, you guys drove onto the yard. He, he has no problems with accommodating to any of those acreages or places to pick up kids. There is, he said, alls they have to do is ask if they're, you know, extremely that worried about it. There is, he said, alls they have to do is ask if they're, you know, extremely that worried about it. Second, I'm already talking about speed on highway forty-four. It is a sixty-five mile an hour speed limit. However, if we build there, you have to remember that we're gonna slow traffic down because we'll be using the turn into that place. So people are, are gonna have to slow down, which creates some guys not being able to speed faster. We're using pickups with, we call them seat tenders, a wagon. We'll be responsible of, you know, making sure that traffic, when we pull out or pull in, they are gonna have to slow down one way or the other. So, being that said, we all know that Eastern Farmers is CHS on the corner. That place was built in two thousand four, if I'm correct. These people that, these neighbors that would be have known that when they bought those acreages, that those places for convenience and speed, and that is all had been there prior years to them moving there. That's what came with the convenience of them moving to their places to have nice road access, smell remover, good location to go to town, all events, interstate. So those are some of the concerns that, you know, I wanted to address that would make this place ideal for our company.
I have a question, David. You said you were going to slow the speed down. Are you, are you going to, I mean, that would take an action of the Department of Transportation to lower that speed on it?
I didn't, I didn't mean it by that. I meant that we have to slow down to turn?
Yeah, and maybe similar to what was used on highway seventeen.
Yes.
You still have, you still have a big deal of traffic.
Correct.
David, I'm not opposed to any of this stuff, and I know that we have people on our board that look at this. But I look at developers, and maybe I've, I, I, I watch too many of them, they will take a site that may not be the most desirable, and I know we have somebody that likes to have a coloring book and make all of these nice pretty pictures on here. I question sometimes the degree of all of that floodplain because I drive by that on one eleven, and every time I leave a commission meeting, I go by there. I've been by there five hundred times. And I look at highway eleven, and where I'm hung up is that I think there are places on one eleven that would make a more suitable place for a business to have access on and off. I am hung up on going on highway forty-four with the speed of the traffic that is there, and I'm hung up also on the safety of the, of the, of the kids that are there, and I know you've addressed all of that. But that's where I'm hung up on, and I'm gonna stick with that. I know that I may not be most popular on that one, but that's where I sit on that one. So, I look at highway eleven as being a better alternative with some modification. It may add some cost to the development, but I think in the long-term area, you would be better served on that one than you would be on highway forty-four.
David, are you agreeing to with, either with or without going through the permit process from DOT? Are you voluntarily agreeing to put in a turning lane to the property?
They said they would, they would determine that, DOT would.
Okay, so you're not going to just volunteer to do that? You wanna wait to see what they'll say?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if I have the resources.
I don't know, but even if you wanted to, you would have to be able to be, correct me if I'm wrong, someone's telling you, it's a DOT decision either way.
Well, we went through that with the Lennox Auto Mall place where we were going through the permit process, and they just voluntarily agreed to do it, even though they had to redo the traffic study. So the DOT allowed it there.
I, I, I'm not sure. I, I mean,
I understand.
But the, the business to the east of us is, you know, twice bold and there's no turning lane there.
One question I have for you, Dave, semi-low lots. I mean, you're, you're handling seed and units of, you know, X amount of acres per bag and all that. What would be the, your projection of how many semi-truck loads would be coming in and out of that in the season?
So, if we sold ten thousand units of, of corn in, say, bags or just units, that would roughly be eight hundred units per semi.
So twelve, thirteen?
So the bulk bins are roughly thirty-five hundred units per bin. So there's five of them. And that would roughly be eight hundred units per, per semi also. So, you know, there's
Twenty-five truckloads?
Yeah. And that's, that's not all in one day. It never will be. The most that would be is probably four at one time during the period from, anywhere from eight AM till five PM.
Otherwise, everything else typically would go out when you're going to customers with a pickup and trailer?
Less than, less than twenty-five percent of them actually come to the business. Seventy-five percent of the time, we do our business out at their place.
Very good. Any other questions for Toby? I've got some questions for staff here.
Yeah, I just, I don't have any questions at this point. I just wanted the conditions put back up on the projector.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Toby, in, in our ordinances and conditional use permitting process, is there anything on this applicant that doesn't meet any of our requirements?
Well, you know, there's criteria that's associated with the application approval and staff, like group staff report and the analysis. Really how the criteria is, is like zoning, like use, and really kind of how staff looked at this as well, too, is it, it's a seasonal type operation. So the impact of it should just be primarily three, four months out of the year, if I'm correct on that part of it. And then, so that was really the criteria with staff to the analysis. Those are those main two criterias. Knowing that staff, when they're preparing a staff report, we don't get the benefit of talking to the neighbors in advance and hearing their concerns and their wishes and things like that. We did anticipate that there was those neighboring residences, though. So we did a clear condition that there really shouldn't be any outside storage that's not screened, the development of it. So everything should be within the building.
Did you, or the, the downlighting, was that added only at the planning and zoning?
That was a previous, or prior to the public hearing.
That was, this is, these recommendations come from staff?
Prior to the public hearing, yes.
Were these, so these conditions were not part of the planings or?
Yes, they were.
They were in front of them?
Yes, but we developed it prior to the public hearing, so.
Board, any other questions for Toby?
Mr. Chairman, Toby, it was a two, four, one. You want to enlighten on what, was it four against, two were four, and then one didn't vote?
So the motion was an affirmative motion to approve the application, and then it was two voted for it, and then four against it, and the one abstained, I believe, was Commissioner Aaron's.
Yeah, I abstained because I arrived late and didn't get an opportunity to hear Mr. Cooper's side of the story.
So we have an appeal, application in front of us. Staff recommendation was to approve, planning and zoning had a split, denial of the application. Not real sure of clarification from why the, the planning and zoning denied it. I think there's, what I hear from board, some reluctance to have it placed across from some agriculture zoned residential property. But, with that, Commissioner, I, I don't disagree. I wouldn't want it across the road. I will, but I don't know, again, what powers that we should ever have, and I'm gonna admit that we've done it in the past and have disagreed with it, that we then make applicants move it because of, you know, just desires of aesthetics. There's, there's argument about why this site has been chosen. We've had our own staff agree that moving us on this property is not conducive to this operation. Same token, I think residents need to understand when they move out in the country, it isn't status quo forever. And, and if we don't want to have this as a, you know, an egg zone type of use commercially, and we need to change that, they need to change that. But under the application, it, the staff's recommendation is to approve it. I, I'm failing to see what justification we wouldn't have to support the staff's recommendation, but that's my thought at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to overrule the decision of planning commission and approve their request for a conditional use permit.
We have a motion to approve the appeal. Is there a second? With that, that fails, is there a motion to uphold the appeal?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to uphold planning and zoning. But I want to tell Mr. Cooper, Dave, we want you to build it. We just would like to see a different location, Dave. That's all. I, I don't want to stand in the way of this, but we'd just like to see if you could look at it, an alternative location. Hey, would that be my motion?
It's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, to uphold the planning and zoning, uh, direction to deny the application, so in essence, denying the appeal. I have to ask both commissioners, under what jurisdiction do we have to place such a requirement? I just, it baffles me, in, in all of the years that I have sat here, why we want to continue to go down this road, which I don't know, but we have prior justification to do it. We've done it over and over again. If we need to place something in language that supports it, they say we do that. But right now, we're doing it because we, you know, I, I just don't know it. So, please help me.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can help you.
That would be great.
I'm not happy with any of this either. One of the reasons, I said this at the Planning and Zoning Commission to Mr. Cooper, one of the reasons I got on this commission is because I saw bad zoning decisions made in my own neighborhood. First of all, the first criteria is the impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties shall be, meaning that it's mandatory in terms of our consideration, shall be a major consideration. So that is one of the jurisdictional questions that you're alluding to, Mr. Chairman. So we, as an individual commissioner, we can say, what is the impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties? And then it goes on to further say, shall be a major consideration. So right there is your justification for people who want to say no. It's written right into our rules. And then it goes on to say, the proposed use should be generally compatible with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. So, that's criterion number one. And then, criteria number two is, measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. So I guess that's jurisdictional question number two. And then, question number three that we're allowed to consider is the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air and water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screen, setbacks, and orientation. So those are three things that give the commission the authority to be able to, to say no. Now, like I told you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not happy with any of it. I want to see the development occur, and I want to see it done in a very smart way, so it doesn't affect traffic and safety and these kids, and you got sixty-five mile per hour speed limit here. I think it could be done. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, I made pretty similar comments. I will say this, some of the testimony that we heard at the Planning and Zoning Committee was different than what you've heard today. There was a lot of discussion about drainage issues in this culvert, and Toby alluded that, to that in his comments. I haven't heard that today. I don't know if that's because, I did hear from Janelle, she said that wasn't a big issue or concern for her, the drainage issue. But some of the other folks who spoke at the planning and zoning said they were worried about this culvert, and it wasn't getting fixed, and and there were drainage issues. Toby now has said, you know, they've looked at it, and there won't be any drainage issues as a result of construction. Nobody really came here today and testified any further about it. I don't know if that's for lack of interest, or because they thought they already put their two cents in, or what. Or maybe the people who were opposed at that time talked to Toby in the interim. I don't know if that's true or not. Could be a combination of all of the above. But we do, in terms of the jurisdictional question, you can ask the question of what the impact will be on adjacent properties. And I think that's what you're hearing here today, is got a bus driver who won't even, a mis-horner? I hope you ask the bus driver to pull into your yard now, that Mr. Cooper said he found out that's a possibility that can happen. As a kid, when I was growing up, the school bus route would switch every, at the, at, after Christmas break. So, for the first half of the year, I'd have to go across the road at six forty-five in the morning, and then after Christmas break, the bus would go the other route, and I could just get right on from my driveway. And I grew up on highway nine in Iowa. I was fifty-five, not sixty-five, so I know what you're saying. Busy highway, school bus driver won't even let the kids go across. I hope you invite them to come on your yard now and allow them to get on the bus, knowing that he said that. You talked about the traffic concerns. Mr. Cooper said there's gonna be, you know, could be four or five semi trucks a day during what I presume to be is a very small period of time when they're doing the seed delivery. My uncle was a seed salesman forever. I saw the trucks go onto his yard, okay? It happens. It's a very short period of time, what happens. I just don't think there's any good answers here. I'm concerned about it. I wish, Mr. Cooper, because I don't want to shut that development down, but we also want it to be safe. And it's got to fit within some of these flood, floodplain and drainage issues as well. So, I'm torn. I'm actually pretty torn by it. But those are my comments right now. And maybe there's a possibility of tabling this. Mr. Cooper can come back with additional considerations or you know, stipulations that he'll agree to that could help resolve this.
Commissioners, thank you for reading what our options are. I guess when I've looked at the impact, it's pretty negative impact. Other than a site issue, there's four or five semis that might come in in a day, not eight every day. Pretty soon, you talk about an impact in an area that's really pretty light considering any change of use. And when you have a harvest, we'll have, you know, a hundred and fifty acres of corn coming out of two hundred bushels. There's thirty thousand bushels of corn that will come off that field, you know, thirty-five, forty trucks in a, in a period of time. So, truck traffic, I pretty much, it's pretty minimal impact. Compatible with the area. We've, we've encouraged in the past that egg-type businesses, you know, get placed out in the egg area where the egg community can use them. This is getting placed in a geographical area to serve the best his potential clientele. So I think it is compatible.
Do I agree? I'd want it, want to have it across the road? No. But it could, there could be a lot worse that could come across the road. And as far as the bus, I think that is an ongoing, and I do encourage you to visit with the bus driver if you haven't already, to see if they'll come in the driveway. Maybe they do already, I don't know. Highway forty-four is a high-traffic road.
Um, highway forty-four is a high-traffic road. It, it would then also not impact the county's budget as far as maintaining that road down the road for the extra traffic. Um, to me, it seems like a logical place for it. I mean, it's, it seems pretty light on the reasons why we would want to not have this business, egg business, out in the egg community, so, but. Right now, I have a, a motion to deny or uphold the planning and zoning's request, in essence, denying the appeal. Is there any further dequestions or discussion on that?
Commissioner Ayers, are you proposing that a tabling of this would be a wise, at this time, to explore this situation?
Yeah, eh, I'd like to know more about the potential for returning land there, and if that would alleviate the concerns. I don't know, I can't say that it would, I'm not there yet, um, but I don't want to deny it either. Then he's got to go through the whole process all over again. He could table it, work with the DOT, find out some answers regarding the safety, as well as potential location, unless that's a non-starter. So that's where I'm at.
Looking at about a two-two vote here, you know, and, uh, if that goes down, we better have some alternative here in this situation.
Give the applicant a direction, eh, what is it, is it, is it the location? Because everyone seems to be in agreement that we want to have this business done. Um, trying to move it on that site location of all the planning and zoning staff, as well as the applicant has indicated, that's not a logical move, uh, because of, you know, other and future drainage issues.
Well, I question that. I do question that. I, I do think there are modifications that can be made, whether you're going to have infill, you're going to have to add, added, uh, you know.
The question to move, to move in, because I've seen, I've seen a hundred different developments come in, and where they have these same issues, and they have addressed them, and they made it possible. This one is just a ready-made situation, I do understand that, but it still had the other implications of, of individuals living across the road. So, I'm not convinced at all that, that Highway One-eleven is out of the question. I'm not at all.
But we've also sat on here and cringed over time when we looked at filling in those spots so that someone can build. That has not been a conducive thing for other individuals downstream, because you've taken up higher capacity, um, so I wouldn't support.
That's a whole other ordinance.
And we have not liked to do any one of them, but we've done it. Um, so, uh, anyway, I'm going to call the question.
No question.
Uh, Sean?
Commissioner Ayers? Is this on, what motion is this on?
This is the only motion that's, is to deny the appeal, to uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Uh, yes.
Krishna Dlesby?
Yes, sir.
Krishna Landee?
No.
Krishna Schmidt?
Yes.
Krishna Poppins?
Yes.
Uh, with that, uh, Cooper Sees is now going to be available, at least on this location with this application, it is a done matter. Where are we at, folks? Sean, help me out, I've lost track.
We have number five left, number eleven left, and then thirteen through fifteen left. And I believe that, uh, Dave Stewart will be here at ten-thirty.
Which Dave's coming at ten-thirty, so that one's... Is he here?
I don't, I do not see him.
You talk to them, I'm, eh, you're, I've never been more disappointed, I will admit. Guys, Tiffany? Yeah, we don't, we've, we've retaliated. Is Dave here, otherwise we'll move on.
He was walking around.
Can we do the M R U?
Sure. What number is that?
Robin.
Oh, do you have that, Sean?
Uh, yeah, I think Marlene was on.
Oh, Marlene, you have it?
I do have, um, number eleven, which is the memorandum of understanding. It is in your share file. Um, I think it is important that you all look at it before you agree to sign it. Um, and it is my recommendation that, um, it's my understanding that interviews will be on Wednesday. Um, there are a lot of stipulations that the state has for us to be a part of the State Forage program. Um, so I would suggest that those who are interviewing take some time to look at, um, what they are asking, um, since we have chosen to go with a, um, county person rather than a state, state person. Um, and we will look at, uh, signing it on the twenty-second of September after you have, um, interviewed the applicants for that position. Because there are very strict requirements that the state still asks of us to be a part of the State Forage program. So, please take a look at that, and we will look at signing it on the twenty-second of September.
Any questions?
If you have questions about it, please let me know.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it will, because that's, eh, the, not, so, not fulfilling these requirements will mean that we can no longer use the State Forage. So, yes, these are the requirements to be a part of the State Forage. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Here's Dave, otherwise, I'll take out number thirteen.
Uh, we have the R F, excuse me.
The RFPs coming in, uh, we're running this today at one o'clock. I'm asking, uh, the Vice Chair and myself to go through those, set up, uh, interview process, um, so that we can start the interview process as quickly as, um, our next meeting or before, uh, but we will get back to you once we see how many RFPs are in, and how many we may have to go to, if everyone is, I'm just looking for approval to have the Chairman and Vice Chairman go through those and set the appointment schedule up.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with your request, I guess.
Thanks, second. Motion, second, any questions on that?
Yeah, I've got questions.
Yeah.
Um, I understand that we're trying to hear the applications, but then, will all those applicants come before this commission to interview in public?
Yeah, unless there's one that doesn't meet, not meet a part of criteria, I would, I would notify everyone who they are, if somebody doesn't meet our requirements by not submitting either financials or something like that, they would be eliminated, I suggest, but now you'd be notified even of those, that get eliminated if any, and then whoever's left, we set up an appointment for the whole board to sit through, but I do ask that we may have to hold a special meeting to go through those, depending on how many we've had, so. Is that acceptable?
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
That's acceptable?
Yeah, so long as all qualified applicants are allowed to interview in public, I'm okay with that.
Well, I, I don't know if the whole application would be in public, I know the board will have to, because of potential litigation or, uh, contracts, some of that may go under, uh, interview process. But that is not what I'm asking right now, this is just asking that we can sort through those applicants, eliminate anybody and notify you who has been eliminated because of a new criteria, notify you who has to get interviewed, and a timeframe to do so.
Understood. Is there a, a number?
We don't, they're not giving, one o'clock is the, oh, the, one o'clock is the deadline.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, I'd ask a motion, or Sean DeCortavol?
Yes.
Krishna Ayers?
Yes.
Krishna Dlesby?
Yes.
Krishna Landee?
Yes.
Krishna Schmidt?
Yes.
Krishna Poppins?
Yes.
Dave must be here now. Hey! Want to come up? Thanks.
Do you prefer mass on here?
You're welcome to do whatever you feel comfortable with.
Well, uh, good morning, you guys are almost right on time. We thought, uh, maybe I wouldn't be right at ten-thirty, but appreciate it. Um, wanted to visit with the commission this morning, just about the, uh, public defender contract. I had, uh, visited with Marlene at the end of last week, and would just asked if there would be a good time to get on the agenda, uh, just to start the topic and the discussion. So, I had put together a, uh, letter to the commission over the weekend, um, provided it, um, last night by email, and I know, um, it's something that, uh, with the holiday weekend, you probably just only had a chance to look at. I just wanted to go through, just in some, um, brief detail on that, I'm not expecting any particular decision or anything today, but essentially just wanted to go through some of the thoughts that myself and Mr. Golden from the State's Attorney have had about how to approach, uh, the contract going forward. A little bit of history, uh, we had started the, uh, conflicts contract with the county back in two thousand, and our firm had provided those services up through two thousand fifteen. In two thousand sixteen is when our firm took over the main public defender contract. So at the end of this year, we'll be finishing up five years as your main public defender, and our twenty-first year overall, working for the county. I wanted to say again just how thankful we have been for that opportunity, and the trust that you've put in our office to provide the representation, representation for the criminal defendants here in this county, it's been a longstanding relationship that we've had, and, and we appreciate it greatly. The contract that we're finishing for two thousand twenty has been a one-year contract, and this was the first time that we had come in and capped the felony numbers that our office would handle. That number is at five hundred and twenty-five felonies. Um, one of the things going forward is I was going to, um, ask the, the council, or ask the commission to do that once again, is to enter into a contract where we'd be capping total felonies at five hundred and twenty-five. And then also, um, through discussions with Mr. Golden, we had talked about also potentially, um, also having a cap on the misdemeanors. So what I'm proposing in this letter would be a, a cap on the felonies of five twenty-five, a cap on the misdemeanors of five hundred. The five hundred on the misdemeanors is, um, still a pretty good margin above the total that we've been handling. We haven't approached, uh, those figures yet. The only year where we have had a pretty good spike in misdemeanors, um, and I'll just throw this up, just to... If you look at, um, two thousand seventeen, and you go down the misdemeanor column, two thousand seventeen, we had a, a very big spike in misdemeanors, and it went up to four hundred, four hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, and then you can see it's dropped back, and that three fifty-nine crept up again in two thousand nineteen, approaching that four hundred mark. Uh, the numbers on the bottom, that was all through May thirty-first, we're coming up on the end of the third quarter here, and I'll have new third, third quarter numbers that I'll provide to the commission, and, uh, get down to, uh, the auditor's office so that she can get that in your packet. But when we're looking at capping the misdemeanors at the five hundred, um, we're still quite a ways above, um, what we've been handling there, so I would think all the misdemeanors would still fall within our office. The, uh, felonies, um, as you can see, we are up, um, approaching that five hundred mark in two thousand nineteen. Of course, a few things have happened this year with COVID-nineteen, um, a, a little bit less case numbers that were coming in. The first part of the year, the first couple of months was right on track, and we were looking like we were going to be handling the same number of felonies, um, that we would have been, uh, in two thousand nineteen. And they're starting to come back in again now, um, as we're getting later in the year. The one thing that I'm sure you're all aware of is that we've had, uh, the ability to start doing jury trials again here in Lincoln County. Uh, I think we've done at least nine now, uh, maybe we're up to, uh, I've got two more that we're scheduled for this week, so we'd probably be up to ten and eleven. Uh, that is something that's coming back into play, we're starting to get caught up with a lot of things that had gotten postponed earlier, uh, this spring, uh, due to the virus, so, uh, those are all, I'm starting to work through the court system. The other columns that you can see on there, uh, we have juvenile, A and M, the fugitive from justice, uh, we just track those numbers separately, those are extraditions where another state is looking, uh, for a particular client that got arrested here in South Dakota. Um, I usually lump those in as just a felony matter and deal with them as a felony, but we track them separately. And then the mental health files. Um, mental health files have been being paid outside of the contract unless they're a Lincoln County resident. I've been handling the Lincoln County residents as part of the contract, but, um, it's myself and two other firms that are, uh, handling the mental health. One of the things that Mr. Golden and I have been exploring is that, right now, with the number of felonies and misdemeanors, um, that are being handled by our office, the other subject areas of juveniles and A and Ms, uh, that's starting to become, uh, a conflict within the courthouse here, because they're sending down other judges from Sioux Falls to handle those matters. Those are being handled on the same days that we have felonies, same days that we have misdemeanors, and I'm finding myself, I'm going to be in, trying to judge those schedules and, um, not upset the judges and, and be in three courtrooms at the same time and, and try to make that work. So one of the things that we were proposing is taking, uh, the juveniles and A and Ms, um, essentially off of the contract for the main public defender office, and then I would step away from mental health to try to free up more of my time to dedicate towards, uh, the felonies, and then handling, uh, the matters that we're, we're submitting for your consideration. The, uh, numbers that we handled in two thousand nineteen, uh, is what I was using to put together the proposal in front of you. We had, uh, forty-six juveniles, and then we had thirteen A and Ms, uh, that was fifty-nine files. Uh, you can see under juveniles, uh, just through the end of May, we are sitting at twenty-five files, um, that's continuing about at the same pace, that's not quite, at the end of May, that's not quite half a year, so we're, we're going to be at fifty, um, probably in that fifty to mid-fifties, I would think, uh, with the juveniles. But, um, what I was looking at is, um, basically the per-case number that we were operating under last year. Uh, we had come in talking about the two thousand twenty contract of estimating right around eleven hundred cases total, uh, we had proposed seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars is kind of the way the math worked out. What I did by removing the juveniles and A and Ms from this is, if I took those fifty-nine cases, um, I had taken our total contract amount for last year, and I'd taken off forty-six thousand five hundred to take us down to the, the eight hundred even. That forty-six thousand five hundred divided by the fifty-nine cases came out at about the seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars a case, a little bit higher than, than what we were, um, figuring at the seven sixty-eight, but I wanted to back that amount out for the files that we wouldn't be handling, and that was the rationale on that side. What I'm proposing, because we'd be looking at having capped numbers for the, the felonies, and then for the misdemeanors, it essentially has a amount that allows me to bid and start working at a multi-year contract instead of having to come in, and both from my side, my side, and also from the commission of having to review the, the contract each year, uh, we would be comfortable offering and asking the, the commission to consider a three-year contract once again. The dollar amount at the two thousand twenty-one would essentially be, um, from that seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars a case to seven hundred and eighty dollars a case, so about eleven dollar, uh, per case increase, that would come out to about a one-point-four percent increase overall, even though we're backing the total contract amount down. And then, each year after that, for the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, we would be looking at and asking the commission to consider just, uh, cost of living adjustments only on the contract of a one-point-five percent, um, in, for starting two thousand twenty-two and then starting two thousand twenty-three. Uh, what we have been using historically in the past, when we've been doing just the escalators or the adjustments on a multi-year contract, we typically been using three percent. Um, I'm certainly aware, as most of folks, um, what you're dealing with right now, uh, just budget-wise, and the constraints that, that you're under, so, uh, I had proposed having that number, the normal three percent adjustment, and going to just a one, one-point-five percent. So, um, those would be, um, the main highlights, um, the other thing would be, uh, right now, I know the commission's very aware of the, the serious cases that we've had come down recently here, uh, three of those that have, um, been here in our county, our office is handling two of them, one of which is a, uh, death penalty case. Uh, where my conversations are focused with Mr. Golden as well, is, um, looking to, um, take out the A and B felonies out of the contract. I'm finding it very difficult to come up with any rational number to be able to submit or, um, justify the risk of coming in and handling those types of cases under the contract. I'm saying it a different way. Saying it a different way is essentially for the two murder files that we'd be handling, because we're at a per-case rate of 760-some dollars, that's essentially what I'm getting paid to handle that. If that's outside of the contract, if you're going out to a private attorney, you understand what the dollar amounts that would be involved with a private attorney handling that kind of firm or that kind of case. So we're proposing to keep the Class Cs in, which would still be many of the cases that would go up to potential ripe in prison. We would keep Class Cs within the contract, but just ask to take out the As and Bs. And if I've kind of missed anything, I don't know if Mr. Golden wants to jump in and provide any information, otherwise I'm happy to answer some questions and go over the proposal. I wanted to get it in a written form just to the commission, so you guys could start looking at it. I know we're trying to finish up the budget process here by the end of September, so just wanted to get this to you, so that you had something. If any of you want to meet with me, as a committee or individually, I'm happy to meet with anybody and go over all the numbers and proposal.
Dave, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So the chart that we're looking at up on the screen, is that just what your office is handled, or is that the entire number of people that have gone through the system here in Lincoln County?
That's just my office.
Okay. And so there are others, but you know, for example, if there's a conflict in your office, other attorneys do get appointed by judges to take care of some of these types of cases, right?
There would be that scenario. It would also be if a private defendant was coming through and they wanted to hire their own attorney.
Of course.
Yeah.
But in terms of what the county and the public is responsible for paying for.
Sure.
Now, in 2018, it looks like we had 109 mental health cases, and then that dropped down to 33. Can you explain that?
Certainly. When we first took over the contract in 2016, there was a provision in the contract that had always been there from previous years, that essentially we were required to also handle any mental health files where somebody was being committed to, well, at that time down to the human service center down in Yankton. In the past, when the prior public defenders would be handling those, you'd maybe have two or three in a year. And what happened was, there's been a big change with the staffing and how HSC is being funded down in Yankton, so Avera Mental Health has become basically the defunct or the default behavioral health and human service center. Because it's in Lincoln County, we're now handling anybody that's a Lincoln County resident, plus out of state, out of county. Anybody that's being brought essentially from anywhere in our state is coming to Avera most likely. So you can see right away, even starting in 2016, there was 87, it went up to 102, 109. The big change between the 109 and then the 33 is that we brought in two other outside firms, just to start splitting up that caseload. And we take essentially a week at a time, so if it's my week, any files that are coming through from Avera at that point that we have to have hearings on, I would go up and handle those, then the other two firms rotate with me. What we had worked out as an agreement with the county is that when I was still handling all of those in 2017 and 2018, none of us had expected that type of a volume. But what we were doing is because the county of origin, so if somebody came from here and they're coming down from their county, Lincoln County bills back the county of origin for that person, and then we're being reimbursed here. So essentially, the cost that I would bill to the county for doing that representation would be a pass-through, and then our auditor's office would send that up to their county of residents, and then we'd be recouping those. So that's what's happening essentially for my firm and the two others that are handling the mental health, except if it's a Lincoln County resident, then I don't bill anything additional for Lincoln County resident, because I felt that would always be under our contract that we had had.
And then the two firms that you talked about, do they subcontract under you, or are they separately contracted with the county?
They are separate. They're not part of any subcontract that I'm doing through mine. It's just something where they had approached the chairman of the mental health board, and the chairman had started utilizing those other two firms as well, just to have that coverage.
And you guys just coordinate in terms of scheduling, week on, week off, et cetera?
We do, but the chairs are typically sending out calendars for a month or two months at a time, so everybody knows who the qualified mental health professional is that's working up at Avera. We know who the defense attorney would be, and then we know which chairman is on for that particular week in handling cases.
So under your proposal here, if I understand correctly, and I haven't seen your letter yet.
Okay.
That you talked about earlier. You want to shed mental health, A&amp;M, and...
And juvenile.
And juvenile, as well as certain classes of felonies.
The A and B on the felonies, and then...
The serious stuff.
Right. So essentially, it's going to be your premeditated murder, those types of cases that would be coming in, the most serious. And then that's something that currently the commission has been contracting for, and you're part of the catastrophic fund, that you're... That's essentially the insurance policy on the backside for the county on those types of files.
And just one other question or area. Since there's been COVID, since the COVID issue came about, has there been less people incarcerated as a result of that? You know, like, for example, normally somebody would get arrested and held over, instead they're getting like a summons and told to show up in court?
On the... What I would classify as mainly your less serious misdemeanors, I think more of that. There was actually a bond schedule that got, that came out that the courts looked at that just said, if a law enforcement officer is dealing with X, Y, or Z, just cite him to court, don't take him into custody. That's on the less serious. Anything else that's felony level, they're all still coming into custody. We're having the next day temporary custody hearing to determine whether or not they're going to stay in custody. I would say you're still running at pretty good capacity. For the number of beds, we still have pretty well full up on the Lincoln County side. Unfortunately, there's still a lot of quite serious matters that are happening, so we still see about the same number in custody.
So with regard to the revised bond schedule, have you noticed any issues, unique issues with regard to people not showing, failure to appear, bench warrants being issued, has that increased? Or here's what I'm getting at, I'll put all my cards on the table, is the revised bond schedule, does it have a great likelihood of being implemented as a normal bond schedule moving into the future?
I would... Hard to tell, but my own personal opinion, I think it'll probably revert back to the original bond schedule. And you're going to be looking at for, if somebody's getting picked up for a possession of marijuana, they're going to come into custody and they're going to bring them down and have them in custody at least until they post bond or make a court appearance. Some of those things, I think, will probably revert back and go back a little bit more to the normal way. I don't, I don't know overall. Your other question was about the failure to appears. Failure to appears unfortunately is becoming just so commonplace anymore. I don't know if it's a whole mentality shift with the defendants, the fact that so many of them are drug-related. The two things that are very common that we're dealing with in court right now is the drug nature of most of the crimes, and then also a large majority have mental health problems. So you're doing, dealing with essentially a dual diagnosis, both mental health and the controlled substance. In a lot of those aspects, for those individuals, either one, it's a, I don't care because I'm currently under the effects of addiction, or they just don't have the mental capacity where they're following through with court dates, and it's not something that they're staying up on. So that is a frustrating thing, is trying to always stay in contact with them and track them down and essentially get them to court. We're seeing a huge increase in the total number of failure to appears that we deal with on a regular basis.
About a month ago, it went back to the regular bond schedule.
Yeah, if I could, if you're going to turn the mic. Thank you.
About a month ago, it went back to the regular bond schedule, pre-COVID, with a couple of very minor changes, but otherwise it's back to where it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Dave, if those numbers through 531 of 20 on the felonies, that number has dropped off based on other years, that's, I'm sure COVID related to some degree.
It was. January, February, that took off just like a normal year. And then, once COVID came into the scene, the number started slowing down, just simply because, you know, I don't think law enforcement was having as much engagement with the general public, where we would normally see just arrest after arrest, whether it's from a traffic stop or something like that.
And then, just a question, your total staff, I mean, you've got yourself, and then there's areas where there's conflict, you know?
So the way that we're handling it right now, it's myself, and then I have two paralegals that are here with me in the courthouse, and then I subcontract with two other attorneys to help with the felony files, and then there's two other attorneys that I'm subcontracting with to handle the misdemeanors.
Okay. I was just curious, you're obviously not doing the whole shrine yourself.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Mr. Stewart? Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, you bet. And please let me know if you want me to come back at one of the next meetings. If there's any questions that any of you have, be happy to visit with you. Thank you. Be safe.
Does that take us up to number 14?
It does.
Good morning, Madam Auditor.
I am here first to talk just a little bit. Commissioner Gillespie had asked me to provide this information to him, and I asked that I share this with all of you before I give it to him. This is a cost, a cost of what it would cost each person based on the bond question that is out there. I based it on $35,000, $35 million, sorry, for a 25-year and a 30-year. $40 million bond for 25 and a 30-year, and a $50 million bond for the 25-year and 30-year. Those are based on $100,000 valuation, $250,000 valuation, $500,000 valuation, and a million dollars. The thing that I want to caution everyone about is that is based on this, on 2021's valuation. So what I did was I went ahead and provided for you what the levy was for this particular courthouse. We borrowed, our bond was $8.9 million for this courthouse. It started being levied in 2006. The levy then per thousand was .280, and the valuation was $3,139,217.52. If you will notice, all the way through this year, that levy continues to change and go down. We here in Lincoln County are very fortunate that our valuations do not stay the same. If our valuation were to say the $7 billion that it is, $7,22 million, whatever it might be right now, it's that $7,226,98145, then you would have to pay that $26.30 a year on your, on $100,000 valuation, or 67, 65, 75, and 250,000. Those would remain stagnant as well. As you can see, since 2006, you can see what our valuation has done here. You'll notice that in probably about 9 and 10, that valuation stays rather stagnant. The reason for that was because in '11, I believe it was '11, right, Carla? When they stopped valuing ag land at its valuation and went to productivity, rather than the value of our land, we all now pay on productivity. I remember that that created quite a dilemma when we went to that, because it meant that the schools got a lot less money, because we went to productivity rather than the valuation of land. But because of the valuation of land was increasing so immensely, the state legislature then felt it was better to go to productivity, which we have been doing since that point in time on ag land. So my point being is that while we look at these numbers, these numbers are based on 2021's valuation of property. And I believe I just heard Kenan and Zoning Toby Brown say we are way above on building permits, et cetera, which means that we are now getting more parcels and more value to divide that per dollar and levy between. So until Lincoln County stops growing and that valuation stays stagnant, we're very fortunate. Bangham County had a half a percent growth in their valuation this year, they were pretty excited to have a half a percent. We continue to hold that 3% to 5% growth here in Lincoln County. While wealth is wonderful and brings us taxes, it also brings about problems as well as we all know. And so that information is available to you, everyone can have a copy of that, but I do need to remind you that those levies change year by year. They are not constant, and the amount that you pay for that bond is not constant. And because I am nearing the end of my career here, in 17 and a half year career in the auditor's office, which before I was in the treasurer's office for a total of two years part-time and four years as full-time, I would like to share with you my passion here as Lincoln County with taxes. The tax, taxes are a very interesting and very complicated, a very complicated way of, and I think it's important that we all understand what our tax statement looks like and how it's figured. So these numbers don't represent, actually, these are based on last year's 19 pay 20s. But here, we look at Canton, and we look at the levy of the city of Canton. I have nothing to do with that. The city of Canton prepares their own budget, and they submit it to me. The county share and the school share. Again, I have nothing to do with what the school gets, the county has no part of that. All I have to do with it is they submit that levy to me, that request to me, and I figure it for them. So that's what the city of Canton looked like. So the county got 11% of every tax dollar that was collected for the city of Canton and the school of Canton. Our bond was .105, and the highway bond was .077. That was added to the general fund to get a total of 2.128. The city got 49%, and the school got 44%. That's a very rare circumstance. Canton is the only place that that happens. It is most, the school usually gets the most amount of the tax dollar. Then we look at the city of Lenox, again, the county only gets 11%, and the county get, the city gets 42, and the school gets 47%. And we look at the city of T, the same circumstance, and the city, the school gets a little bit more there because they have more bonds out. So that makes them get a bigger share of the pie. The city of Harrisburg, the county gets 12%. The city of Harrisburg has a very low levy as well, it's just a little over $3. Most cities are in the, the city of Sioux Falls is a little over $4, but the rest of them are about in that $8 to $9 range. The city of Sioux Falls, the county... The city of Sioux Falls, the county again, only gets 11% of that tax dollar. And the city of Sioux Falls in the Harrisburg School District, um, again, that's a little bit different picture, the county only gets 9% in the Harrisburg School District. Now, and then we went on to some townships where you can see it's a little bit different because your township levy is considerably lower, um, they operate on a lot less money than what, um, your municipalities do. All right, so this is how growth is figured, we take the total growth number that the assessor office, um, gives to us, and, and we take the final year before, and we divide that final growth number by the, the final valuation number, by the growth number, and you get 3.668%. That's how much growth Lincoln County recognized, and this again is 19 pay 20, because we don't have the levies yet for 20 pay 21. We get two, 2.4, last year, we got 2.4% as CPI. This year, we will experience, um, 1.7%. Um, so our total growth factor was that. So to, to figure out what the county taxes are going to be, I have to go back to the taxes that we figured, that we collected the year before, which was 12 million 190,925 dollars. I get to add that, multiply that times the growth. So in 19 pay 20, we got to add 739,746 dollars. Then, I take that total, divided by the total of the valuation, and I came up with the county general operating levy of 1.906. And then we did the courthouse bond and the highway building bond. Again, those bonds are figured by the, by the amount of the bond payment that is due that changes from year to year, because as we pay down, the interest becomes less. Um, and so, of course, like anything else, the less interest there is, the less the payment is, the principal stays pretty much the same. So that is how we figure growth. Now, that's how we figure levy, because that's all the taxes that this county gets to collect. That's how, that's all the tax dollar that you're paying to this county is based on that 1.946, um, per hundred thousand of valuation. So then we take the, um, school tax revenue. Now, the, the state legislature sets as a part of their session, they have to set the ag classification levy, the owner occupied levy, and the other levy, plus they also, um, set the 1.616. We on the county levy have nothing to do with that. It is state mandated, it is chosen by the legislature. It's my understanding that what creates that little bit of magic is the Department of Education does their little magic to say how much the state can pay for the schools, and then revert to the county to pay their share to operate that. So you can understand that the ag classification gets considerably less of a levy, um, against, um, the owner occupied is somewhat less, and the other then is the top. Um, so anybody who has business or, or rentals, that's the amount that we use for that. Um, the capital outlay goes by growth in CPI for a maximum dollar of $3. Again, this year, it was decided that we have to do that in a different way. Um, it's based on the number of students per capita, um, where we're relying heavily on the state to let us know, um, how capital outlay is going to be figured again this year, because they have chosen to change the way that is figured as well. Um, the school also gives a dollar amount for each bond, so you can see that the, the school levies, um, are very different. Here's a tax statement that shows you what you're paying to the school district, what you're paying to the county, and what you're paying to the city of Canton. If you live in Sioux Falls, or if you live in, uh, Harrisburg or Lennox, they apply additional drainage fees, et cetera, uh, and from footage fees to those tax statements that also is a part of that tax dollar. Um, to prepare the, the school levies, we have to combine valuations. Every school district in, in Lincoln County shares with another county, with the exception of Harrisburg. Harrisburg School District is strictly, um, only in Lincoln County. We do not share valuations or levy amounts with any other one. T is Minnehaha and Lincoln, Lennox is Minnehaha, Lincoln, and Turner, um, Beersford is Clay, Turner, and Union, Alcestar is Union and Lincoln County, Canton is Minnehaha County, and Lincoln County. Um, so, that, that is all compiled together, we have to take all of those valuations and do a fact. When we do that, we have to figure abatements, um, any of the abatements that you do have to be figured in, so that the schools can recoup, recoup that on the general fund as well as on the, um, as well as on the capital outlay side. So we complete all the forms, the levies are approved by the Department of Revenue, they're entered into our computer, and the state, um, the tax statements are created and mailed to you, um, hopefully by the second week in January. And, um, this process starts in September, and hopefully is completed by January 1. We have special assessments that have to be added into that. Uh, a part of a lot of people's tax statement is also, um, any maintenance fees, um, that road districts put on them if they're in a road district. Um, so that's the tax process. So, um, the county gets a very small share of that tax dollar. Um, in, and in that respect, if we look back at, at what our budget is, we here have been very fortunate to, um, um, to, uh, have other revenue, but the total taxes that are being, that are being collected from the taxpayers, the 13 million 549 016, that's all. The rest of it, and I think I've been very adamant in talking about this with budget, that I figure low the other revenues that we have, and figure, um, figure, um, the expenses where we leave them to be, so that we have a little leeway. Um, I think we probably all know what our, our own personal incomes are, and that's how we figure our, um, budget. So with that being said, uh, thank you for listening to me and, um, bearing with me as I shared with you my passion for Lincoln County, which has always been taxes. It's an interesting, um, and, um, very convoluted, um, situation that has been created, um, for us to handle. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Are you willing to answer any questions if there are? I don't know if there is, but...
I've got one, when, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Marlene, um, I want to thank you for putting up with me, and I, I asked you, and you delivered, and thank you for doing that.
Yes.
So, uh, I've had a lot of people wanted to know these amounts. I think these are, you, you wanted to wait till they're, they were accurate?
Mm-hmm.
I think, uh, you know, if, as long as growth continues, then these would tend to see the drop. If growth stopped, then these figures would be, you know, stay the same, and downwards otherwise, so, thank you.
So, yes.
Yeah.
That's my job here, is to do what you ask.
Marlene, thank you.
If anybody doesn't think this is a complicated situation, they should know, my goodness.
All right. Uh, and I know you probably said it, but just a clarification, when we look at our growth factors, we never get to include any reappraisal valuation.
No.
It's strictly new growth, not a revaluation, and a lot of times, there's comments that, that we generate reappraisals just to create more revenue for the county, just clarifika, clarification that does not add.
And, anybody who would like to look at that, I could show you how we determine those. Um, we take them from the assessor's office, the assessor's office gives us all of those numbers, they turn them from assessed value, and I turn them into taxable money, because assessed value is not taxable money. Each year, um, the assessor's office is given a, um, taxable weight that we multiply times the assessed value, which makes the taxable levy less than the tax, less than the assessed value.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Let's lead this into our final discussion of the day budget. Does anybody like to discuss any aspect of our budget that we've been looking at for months now?
Well, I agree today. I spoke last week regarding Commissioner Schmidt, my proposal, that's just, uh, just two of us getting together, that could be modified or changed, no problem there, but, uh, that was what we kind of agreed on, uh, without, uh, shooting each other, I guess, so, uh, anyway, so, that's all I have.
Only question I'd have, and I commend you both for, for working on that, is to present somewhat of a idea and a tenure proposal of how we maintain roads, it seems like we constantly are removing items out of the budget of the highway department that needs, needs it desperately, and, and it would be nice to know in the long-term plan how we can stop doing that, so roads can be at least as in good a condition as we have now, so...
If I may interject just a moment, please, any, anything that has changed on that budget will need to be made by a motion today, um, for us to change it.
Oh, that changes the circumstances.
Yes, it does. Anything after, after the September 1st has to be done as a motion and recorded in our minutes to change it on that budget.
And that has to be done...
That's not the final one, is it? That's not the final budget we passed.
Yes.
You, you passed the provisional, anything after the public hearing that has changed on that provisional budget has to be done by a motion.
But has to be done today, by today?
Oh, no, you can do it on the 22nd yet, it's just very hard for us to make any changes.
Okay, I think everybody took it to ask, because I think there's a lot of those...
We can certainly do that on the 22nd, you'll just have to give us time to make those changes, to make those available to you, to see what that budget looks like then.
Okay.
Um, so...
More negotiations.
Okay, and that, that's fine, I'm just letting you know that any changes may have to be done in a motion process.
Marlene, what is the, uh, the 22nd is your top dead date, uh, you have, what is, is that, is there another date outside of that that has to be submitted, or...
Well, I don't know what the Department of Revenue will do to, do to you if you don't pass a budget, I mean, I guess that's a question I have to ask the Department of Revenue, these are the Department of Revenue guidelines that tell us by October 1st, um, these budgets need to be in place. I'm written up if they're not, you're not, I am, um, written up as a, as a comment against me, and my last audit was no comments, and I guess I don't care about this one, because I won't be around to see it, but I'd still like to leave it in that manner.
Thank you. We don't want to put you, put a black dot beside your name, Marlene.
Is there anything else to come before the board today? Otherwise, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman Gillespie.
Motion second to adjourn. Any comments? Mo, uh, Sean?
Christian Erens?
Yes.
Christian Gillespie?
Yes.
Christian Landine?
Yes.
Christian Schmidt?
Yes.
Christian Poppins?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.